We get the Zoom working. Wait, are we recording yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Started.
All right.
All right, we're all here, so let's open the meeting of the ZBA. Welcome to Karen, thank you for pitching in.
Thank you.
It should be a short meeting tonight, just some, just reviewing some documents.
Okay.
We have a complete attendance tonight, so no problem with a quorum. The first thing on the agenda is the resolutions from, from our meeting of September 16th. Let's start by looking at the draft resolution for Three High Street. Does everybody have it?
Yep.
Okay. So take a moment to look at it or look at it again and let me know if you see a problem or an improvement.
I didn't have any problem with this, Eric. Thank you for doing it. And I mean, the second time of, third time I've looked it over. I don't see anything needs changing in my, in my review.
All right, thank you.
I'm in the same camp with John.
Yeah, it looks good to me, too.
Laura, well, Laura's abstaining because she was not
That's right.
present during the hearing. Does someone want to move acceptance of these, of this draft as written?
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution for the three feet as drafted by chairman.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was unanimous. Moving on to the next one. This, we have a resolution for hearing the same night for Fifteen Orchard Street, detached garage.
I don't see any adjustments to be made.
Same here. Oh, I agree with the first heat statement.
And it looks good to me, too.
All right, then I move that we accept the draft as it, as it's written of, of resolution 11, 2001.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
I just had a question on, if we could, not to change anything that's in it, but I think I was the one who sort of diverged from everybody by saying I didn't think it was necessarily self-created.
Yeah, that's noted there that one member disagreed with the notion of self-creation.
Right, and I see that. So, you know, again, my point was, you know, there was a garage there when they bought the property. They basically started taking it down. There's only very few places that, that it could be put. And, you know, they had purchased the property with an understanding there's a garage on it. So I guess, you know, the theory and the understanding of the rest of the board is if you take the whole thing down, the fact that you're rebuilding it, you're self-creating a situation. Or I think that's where I was finding the disparity.
Yeah, that's an interesting point. And this is always a, a struggle, this technical notion of self-creation. It's kind of an artificial notion. So they, and it really would take a, an expert, a lawyer to answer that. For me, I, I can't really say, I mean, they, so that the garage was there and then it came down due to basically an act of nature that it became unstable. The, the construction deteriorated through, well, age, you know, wear and tear, age, poor construction, it had to be demolished for safety. So they did not, they did not voluntarily take it down. So in an everyday sense, that's not their, they didn't create that problem. But, so then they had nothing, no garage. And they chose to, to build a new garage. I don't know, I could see it either way. They, they didn't have to build a new garage. The, the world doesn't owe them a garage. The zoning code doesn't owe them a garage.
Yeah.
So, but they chose to have one and they had a good argument for, for this exception. So, I mean, it, it's an interesting academic point. I can't give a definitive answer. And in this case, it doesn't matter because we, I think we were pretty strongly in favor of the application regardless of, of this particular factor.
No doubt.
It'd be nice, John, to get some case law on this or, or just like some, you know, just some guidelines, like, you know, a spectrum of cases, like, you know, strong yes, strong no, and then the range in between and, and what's court, courts have ruled. Not, but again, this is, you know, this self-creation factor is, is rarely decisive. So it's not like it's a high priority that we, that we become experts in this particular question.
Yeah, no doubt. I just wanted to make it sort of clear why my reasoning was a little different because if they had bought that property without a garage on it, you know, there was no garage, then I would say it was self-created. You know, they bought a property that didn't have a garage and they wanted a garage, but they could have built, they could have bought a property that had more land in order to create, you know, build the garage. In that sense, it would be self-created. But here, they bought the, the property, had a garage on it, but it was deteriorating.
Right.
So, you know, they thought they had what they had, but until, you know, Mother Nature stepped in, you know.
Yeah, that's what I do, do think that guide, New York State's Guidebook to ZBAs talks about, unless I'm misremembering, they, they talk about a case, a hypothetical where the municipality, using eminent domain, the municipality runs a highway through a property or right next to the property. And because of that, the owner needs to take actions contrary to the zoning code in order to cope with this, in, in this intrusion, this incursion by the municipality. And, and the, the guidebooks says in this type of hypothetical, this would count as not self-created because it was a higher power imposing a detrimental situation on the landowner and the landowner is simply trying to, to compensate. So that, they give that example as a, as a, as a test case of, of not self-created. But this shed thing is kind of, this garage is kind of, is similar in every respect except it was not a higher power. Well, it's not a governmental power. It was, it was just, you know, wear and tear, act of nature, whatever you want to call it, that, that led to the situation. So whether that's self-created, I don't know.
Okay, so I didn't want to break it out, but I did want to just mention that, just, you know, just future purposes for us to think about and I'll see if I can compile something that gives us a, like you said, it's never really a point that becomes decisive or determinative and it typically goes against the applicant anyway, so. But I'll see what I can put together. Thanks.
All right.
You know, I had asked a similar type of question when we were talking about it and that, and how do we take into consideration the fact that there had been a garage there previously to our deliberations on this quote "new garage"? And Eric answered the question that you, you don't, that you, you consider it a new building, that the fact that there had been a garage there before didn't go into the consideration that they were putting up a new garage, somewhat similar.
Yeah, right.
No longer pre-existing. Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that question did not come under the heading of the self-creation factor.
No.
More like which, which part of the zoning code do we apply here? The, the part that relates to new construction or the part that relates to modifying and existing? Because those are two different, got two different provisions. And I, I believe it's clear, clearly that we use the, the provisions dealing with new construction. If, if a previous building has been completely removed. Okay, the last item on the agenda is draft minutes for this, this meeting where the two hearings occurred, September 16th. And Jeff sent them to us a while ago. I trust everyone has the copy. Take a look at them and, and let me know of, of any changes.
The, the change or the question that I had is a direct segue from the conversation we were having is to, if you drop down below public hearing, the first tabbed bullet underneath construction of detached garage, previous garage had been torn down. Should we signal that it was due to an act of nature? That it was torn down?
I don't know. Well, I don't know if it's, if it matters. This was just the, the applicant did not present any evidence. This was just an assertion.
It's true, it was the public hearing.
And it, and it never entered into our, it, it, it didn't affect the decision one way or the other.
That makes sense.
I mean, it's kind of a judgment call. What, what was the, the reason? You know, it's kind of a technical, it's an engineering question. And whether it was really necessary, it's, it's all water under the bridge and we can't really know the, the facts here. So.
Erica, so these minutes here, you know, I've read them through. My, the one that paragraph that references to me, maybe one-third of the way down, first page, during the discussion playing the five factors, Jay Martin requested it be on the record that he doesn't agree with the board's interpretation of code. That eliminates the need for a variance. And then I would want to put in need for a variance where the house is not conforming, you know, in its footprint, it's 41%. And you're increasing the bulk by going up. You're not increasing the footprint necessarily, but you're increasing the bulk going up. And I haven't had a chance to really look through that because I just had too many people dying around me lately and I don't want to laugh about it, but it had been really backed up with a lot of different things going on.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about this. So, because I, I didn't think your, your comment referred to total lot coverage.
No, all I, yeah, all I referred to was, well, in this case, really, we're talking just the main building and the fact that I think the building itself, because once the, the shed was removed, the building itself was 41%, I believe, correct?
Um. There's maybe another outbuilding, another accessory building?
Yeah, maybe there was.
But I think that's on their plan and I can call it up here and take a look.
Maybe we don't even have to go that far. The other thing is, you know, if you're already in a setback, so that's pre-existing non-conforming. But you have a one-story house.
Right.
You know, and now you're building up and adding, you know, an extra floor above it. And it's in the setback. My, you know, again, I, I, I believe there's somewhere in the code and I just didn't have a chance to look at it, but I believe that's increasing and, you know, I have to say that Donald McDonald felt the same way as the way we usually did this in the past, that it's sort of increasing the, just by the bulk, increasing the non-conformity.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. You're talking about, I'll call the code up here. I know which, which provision you're talking about. So, let's see here. It's the one about non-conforming. Yeah. It's 134-19H. This is a key paragraph. Non-conforming buildings may be repaired, altered, reconstructed, or enlarged, et cetera. There's a whole list of things provided. Now, there's two, there's two provisions here, provided that such action does not increase the degree of non-conformity. That's number one, cannot increase the degree of the non-conformity. Or number two, create any new non-conformity to district bulk regulations. So cannot create any new, new non-conformity. So here's a case where we have a house, a building that intrudes into the side yard and it's one-story high. And the owner wants to add a second story, keeping the footprint the same, but height, increasing the height. So, and you're, you're addressing, John, number two here. Does this action create a new non-conformity to district bulk regulations? And that's a good point. And the, you're, John, you're saying traditionally the ZBA read that to, to mean an increase in height, as in this case, is counts as a, a new non-conformity to district bulk regulations?
Yeah, we, we did. And I think you could talk to Donald McDonald on that point, but what would be better is for me to do some research, really, to, to find out how the code is typically interpreted, you know, with similar provisions. Like, for instance, the second point, as long as it doesn't increase the non-conformity and if you're building up, then it could also be interpreted that you can't build up more than, you know, two and a half stories.
Right, well, they're not doing that. They're, they're, they're under the two and a half story.
But there is, there is an effect of having a house that, you know, run on a property line going from one story to two stories, you know, just with the shadowing effect and everything and I, I just have to, I have to do research on it. I technically, I don't know. I, I can tell you the way we, that we used to handle it. I can tell you that. And, and often we would look at it as being a variance need and then we would just look to see what the rest of the neighborhood looked like. So, again, that's something I have to do work on.
Yeah. I thought a lot about this. I mean, I, I, I always, a, a ZBA has to obviously has to stick to the letter of the code. It cannot impose restrictions on homeowners, on property owners that aren't in the code, no matter how sensible those restrictions are. It's got to be, we got to be able to point to something in the code. Before we tell somebody you can't do this without permission,
Absolutely.
point to something in the code. So if you've got a one-story in a yard and you want to add a second story, keeping the footprint the same, before we can say you can't do that, we have to show that that's creating a new non-conformity to district bulk regulations. There is no, there is no provision that prohibits an increase in height in a side yard. Prohibiting an increase, prohibiting a building located in a side yard from being increased in height. There's no provision against that.
Well, there's nothing, you see, well, that's another point of consideration, which I was going to say. There's no specific language like that that makes it clear. You know, you're, you're, you're sort of stating it another way. And so that if there was, like, for instance, if there was clear language that you cannot increase the bulk of a house that's already in a setback and raise that bulk straight up following the same footprint, you can't do that. There is no language that says that. So currently, the way we're, we're reading the language, it, it's like sort of an ambiguity. And the point I, the reason why I raised it is because we were treating it differently.
Yeah.
And that's all I'm saying.
Well, luckily, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I agree with you. We, we have to stick with the code and the language. And the question is, how do you interpret the language? But then if it's ambiguous, it would go against the village and in favor of the applicant.
Yeah, well, I, I, another way of looking at it that makes sense to me is this house, this, this intrusion, in this one-story intrusion into the side yard is obviously a, a non-conformity, but it is permitted. The code permits it. It does not have to be corrected. And so that owner would be reasonable to assume he has all the rights of any other homeowner. I mean, he can treat that, that portion of his building like, since it is permitted, the code does not, since it's permitted, that homeowner has the same rights with regard to his building as any other homeowner, which would include increasing the height. So, absent any, absent any, any language specifically excluding that action. So, so you see what I'm saying? It seems to me we, we would be hard pressed to take away from this owner that right to increase the height when, when his one-story is, is legitimate.
I mean, a perfect example of this, just to let you know, is just a block down from your wine shop is that on Fair Street, that new house that's being built from the old gas station. And it used to be just one-story tall. Now they're, they're not adding a second story per se, but they're adding a fairly substantial pitched roof and the, and the building is right up on the sidewalk. So it has much more of a, you know, commanding appearance over the entire sidewalk and much more bulk intents. And, you know, I've had several neighbors come over to me and speak to me about it, like, who approved this? And, you know, we never saw it, the planning board did.
Yeah.
And if I were to look, I would, I would have softened the, the, the front end of the building to have like a pitched roof going back to make it not look so bulk-oriented up front. You know, but.
Well, yeah, this, this particular scenario comes up from time to time. It's definitely, because we have so many non-conforming buildings that intrude into, into yards. It's, it's quite, it is not unusual to, for us, the ZBA, to be confronted with this exact question that you're, you're raising, John. So definitely there, there are cases that, but happily, we don't have to worry about this because the, the trustees have recognized this ambiguity and they have revised the language of this provision in the, in the, the new version of the code that they're working on. So they have added language, John, saying exactly what you were just quoting a minute ago, something about the, the, that the, the portion of the building in the side yard may not be increased in height. I mean, they've put that in, literally answering this exact question. So, and that's a recognition of the ambiguity that, that currently exists, but it will be eliminated once they accept the revised chapter.
The ambiguity will be eliminated, yes.
Yes, yes, the ambiguity will be eliminated.
And I, I didn't mean to really draw us out on this, but this comes before us over and over and over again. The, again, we were maybe acting beyond what the code was permitting us to do, but in the sense that we were requiring people to, to obtain a variance for that bulk addition into a setback area where it was non-conforming. We were doing that. So that's, that's the only reason why I came up and I brought this, but this just helps everybody think out loud in their heads, you know, I mean, again, zoning really, again, goes to bulk. And that's really what people are trying, you know, that's area variances, that is, use variances completely different, you know, but bulk on area variances is exactly why the code is in place. So, all right, not going to say any more. I know everybody figured this was going to be a short meeting.
Well, no, that's valuable. Do, so what language would you like us to put in this, these minutes here?
Say, oh. No, no, I'm just kidding. I was simply going to say this, right where it begins with because, eliminate the rest of that, just simply put that, you know, a variance would be needed to increase the bulk in a non-conforming structure. You know, where it's a back area, you know, I mean.
It's the part in the yard, right? You mean, you're talking about increasing the height of the part in the yard, part of the building in the yard.
It could be anything. Just say for, if the, if the main building covered 41%, just say, for instance, the main building covers 41% of the property, of the area of the property, all right? Just to build up, if it's, say, it's one story and they want to go up, that's already non-conforming. You're bulking it up, even if you're in the same footprint.
Oh. Okay, well, that's a, that's an interesting assertion. That's a different, that's similar but different. So you're saying a, a non-conforming lot coverage of 41% and they want to increase the height and keep the footprint the same. So still 41%, no change in, in lot coverage. And yet it triggers the need for variance, just the increase in height? Even if they keep under two and a half floors?
That, you know, that, that would be my opinion because it's, it, again, it's increasing, you know, it's increasing the bulk, it's increasing the non-conforming use. It's building it up. It's built, it's expanding it.
Well, that to me is a little more far-fetched.
Even if it's not in setbacks, I'll have to look for language on that. That's all.
Okay. So here we'll say, he doesn't agree with the board's interpretation of the code that eliminates the need for a variance when when height is in, when the height is increased.
In this case, we can limit it. You know what they do in the, in the courts? You can't, they don't want advisory opinions that don't address the facts. So in this case, we could just simply say you're expanding the non-conforming use by building up the house to a second story where it's in the setback area. Which is what is that issue here, right?
Expanding the house by increasing the height in the, in the setback area.
Right. We could just keep it towards that, you know?
He does not agree with the board's interpretation of the code that eliminates the need for a variance when the house is expanded by increasing the height in the setback area? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. You know, and obviously, from what we already discussed, ambiguity in this case, because of the way the language reads, would go in favor of the applicant. So I don't know how much we really want to just keep altering this, but you, what you said is what I had stated. I just, at that point when we were conversing, I was going back with past practice in mind, but didn't have a specific provision in front of me to really But didn't have a specific provision in front of me to really guide. What I was trying to determine. And you've read the provision. And because that's the ambiguous. I'd probably have to say would go in favor of the applicant, but.
Alright. Okay, well, thanks for bringing all that up. Um. And as I said, in 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 very little time, it will be a moot question. It will be, we'll have better guidance from the code. Um, any, I I have a a correction, a minor one, a second paragraph, right under public hearing for Three High Street. Um, noted noted that David David Hotroth, architect, presented an overview of the project. And noted that it had been revised to eliminate the need for a lot of coverage variance due to et cetera, et cetera, to the end of the sentence. What I recall is um. The removal of the shed was always part of this project. It was there from the beginning. So he did not, that was not part of a revision. What he changed in the revision was to reduce the amount of the setback on the west or the rather the south side. Uh, he 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 just made it just like slightly less. So. Um, the part that intrudes into the the new part, the the new footprint intruding into the yard on the south side. He reduced that dimension slightly in the revision. So I would change this to read noted that it had been revised. To reduce the size of the setback variance, then period. Since an existing shed will be removed, comma, the net effect. Is proposed percentage of lot coverage is less than existing percentage.
That's right.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Anybody else? I didn't. I move to uh, accept the the minutes of uh, September sixteenth twenty one uh, as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous with Laura abstaining.
Thank you.
Um. And that is it for the um, agenda. Does um, anyone have other um? Any other comments or business?
Just let me ask you one second here, Eric. So you remember that second hypothetical I gave you where the house is not in any of the setbacks? But it's forty one percent to say, for instance, and it's being built up. What would the new, how would that provision? Work with that?
Um, the new language would not apply there because the the new language talks about being in a setback. Um, you can't, the in the new language, you can't increase height in a setback.
Okay.
Even if the footprint is the same, so um. So that's a good point, um. Maybe that maybe the language should be adjusted further um. So.
I think that's what you want. Yes, I think that's what you might want to at least bring that we got to bring the hypothetical up to the board of trustees. They're still working on it. And 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 Donald McDonald. Because here you're you're talking about houses forty one percent, we only usually allow thirty percent area coverage with some small variances here and there. But what if somebody really tries to bulk it up?
So um, a house that is non-conforming in any respect. Is not permitted to increase height without a variance.
I I'm thinking that.
Is that the idea? Is that, is that the one, the basis that the board has been thinking in the past?
Uh. Well, usually we dealt with setbacks, so I can't remember offhand. There might have been one case where where I could think of the property, I forget the name of the street, where the the house was not in the setback and they were building up. And we applied the same reasoning. Um, again, talk to Donald, you know, talk to, just ask him if they want to get the, you know. If they're if they're going as far as talking about the setbacks, what about where the non-conforming structure is really sizable? Within, you know, not in that bag. Because heck, if you're only according to the new rule, if you're only six inches into a setback, it'll keep you from building up like that. Without a variance. So again, just so that maybe so that we think about these things just before they go through the whole process. It it is a big, it is an issue that comes up quite often.
Mm hmm.
The way it's proposed in the new, in the revision. Says non-conforming buildings may be continued repaired, structurally altered, moved, reconstructed or enlarged. Provided that such an action does not increase the vertical height of the non-conforming building. Or the degree of or create any new non-conformity to district bulk regulations.
So it doesn't even talk about setbacks. It's talking about. So it's, it is applicable across the board to what we're doing. The the only reason why I'm bringing this up is so important if they're going to change the rule, because we get these questions all the time. And you know, everybody wants to build up and have a bigger house on their property. You know, the the houses around here are small. And the question is, how are we trying to maintain the character of the community? And uh, so we have to keep all these things in mind, uh, you know. When I was living in Eastchester, they they started building McMansions, as they used to call it, you know, because. People would take small lots and literally put mansions on them. Almost wall to wall. It looks stupid.
It is. Would you say, John, that um. Historically, when these, when these applications have come to the Z B A, the board has generally approved them. These these bulk out, these like.
No, we weigh all the. It 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 the the point is it becomes a variance question. And and we weigh it. And we look at the, we look at the neighboring, uh, you know, we have to apply the five factors, you know, I I. But the point is they're making it a variance request.
Mm hmm.
And so. Everything has to be looked on onto its own facts. I don't think that the board, I don't think. I I Jeff, I think with what you just read out is basically saying it's not a moratorium on that happening. It's just simply a variance is needed, correct?
Correct. This new code says you can't go up.
Jeff, could you read the language after provided that again?
Sure. Not not conforming buildings may be continued repaired, structurally altered. Reconstructed or enlarged, provided that such such action does not increase. The vertical height of the non-conforming building. Or the degree of or create any new non-conformity to district bulk regulations.
Okay, yeah.
So it it said, the language goes in the direction of a moratorium. But I'm sure that that people can make a various request.
Absolutely, yeah. It's like like any other um, prohibition in the code, you just, you know, you ask for an exception.
That's it, that's right.
Yeah, I I I'm sad to see this this bulking out, especially um. These one story, it's very typical of the old houses to have like a one story shed going out the back. Where often the kitchen was, um, and it's very typical over the years for those, that's the thing that gets bulked up with an addition of a new story. And that really does change the character of the historic character of of that type of house. Um, but it's been done so often, and the Z B A would have a hard time. Saying no, it's really more, to me, it's more of a problem, it's more, it should be more of a concern to the historic district review board. Because to me, it's a violate, it's. It's more a violation of historic character than it is an imposition on a bulk, an imposition on the neighbors.
I would have to say that what we have now with the new with the new law coming out. It makes it clear that we are to look at this very closely and, you know. But it it try to keep everything becoming overly bulked. We have to look at all the five elements and apply it. So. I I think that this new provisions goes in favor of us uh, having more, you know, leverage to say no, you know.
Yes.
And one last thing, I want I want you to keep in mind, you remember that little bump out where there's certain, you know. On the second floor, they want to bump out the floor so that it's like an overhang from oh, from the first floor?
Uh, was that in, you mean here on High Street?
No, it was done in a, you remember somebody was trying to do that garage?
Garage on. Yeah, that's me.
Yes, uh, right, yes, I remember. That was a garage, right.
I think that, you know, we all had a problem with the bulk appearance of that. And uh, my feeling is that it 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 goes to the face, the closest face of that side of a building. Where you measure from, not from. Not from the 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 foot, the foundation. That's my opinion. I think we should let, you know. Make that be the case. Currently, the language makes you go towards the foundation. And the foot of the building. And I and I just think that, you know, doing these bump outs, you know, gets, you know, it's a loophole, gets you around.
Yeah, well, they they ended up not doing the bump outs, so I believe, right?
It's just. Get bulk issues, but and I think it was too close to the house.
Right. Although, as of a few days ago, when I walked by, they they have not done that work, so. On that property, so the work was has not been done. Maybe it never will be. If you, if that makes you feel better, John.
No, it's not that I I I I don't want people to have what they have. I'm just looking going forward. I'm just talking about. We're gonna come up with, I think, you know, even though it looks like a swish chalet, you know, where the, you have a bigger second floor. Area space, you know, square footage footage. On a on a stump, you know, of a of a first floor, you know? And that gets around some of these arguments. I I I think that we should. Have the village trustees at least think about that. It came to us once, it'll it could come to us again. That's my feeling. Do you communicate with them on a regular basis with the guys?
Not regularly, no, no, I don't. Um, I I have to, I give them a monthly report. Um. But um, there is no regular um, communication. I I just made submitted comments on the revision to chapter one thirty four.
Yeah, I I I was there when you did it. Uh, so I feel this would be a very simple revision. It's simply to the, you know. The face of the building. That is closest that you're dealing with, you know, on a south side, north side or anything. You know, whatever projection out is from where you measure from.
What about like bay windows? Um, in other words, architectural projections that are less than the facade.
Right, right. I I think that uh. Yes, I because you know, a bay window doesn't have a square footage. It it really just projects out. It doesn't really have its own floor, per se.
Right.
And 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 I think that that could be accepted, that could be looked at as an exception. I just had, I I was really bothered by, you know, people like, you know, trying to construct like that. And then saying, well, no, it doesn't really violate, you had to measure from the base. And I I think that's, you know.
Are you talking, John, are you talking about measurement from the building to the property line or to the adjacent building? Or are you talking about?
Or to a building or whatever. What you do is you measure where the house on that given side projects out the most. Whether it's the first floor or the second floor. That's my feeling.
You're not talking about square footage of the floor.
No, I'm simply talking about where there's a portion of the building that. Where, you know, in this case, we're talking about overhanging second floors. It it if it overhangs into a setback. Or is more than, is less than ten feet away. In this case, we we had a garage less than ten feet away from the main house. By that face that projects out. That becomes a problem.
Yeah, I'd I would have to look back at the code. I don't remember how the code determines. Um. Footprint, like. When the question is, does the house intrude on the setback? I don't know how the code.
Reference to the ground level is what it did. So it made you measure uh, the square footage of the first floor. Talked about ground level, that's that's the point. But well, I'll do more work on that and maybe I'll just mention something to. Some of the trustees, uh, I don't want to take further down this road tonight if people were looking for a shorter day, but.
Yeah, I I guess, when you raise an interesting hypothetical, what if someone built like an enormous, an enormous, um, an enormous overhang? Six feet, you know, can a levered out? Um, does that, is that into leak extending into the yard, side yard or or front yard? Is that um? Uh, is, is, does that violate the definition of footprint um, setback?
Currently, I think the language is, you'll find it, you'll find it. It it talks about measuring at the ground level. It it talks about the surface of, you know, of the ground and 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 the footprint, so. I read it, I I, you know, I I I felt like my hands were tied with the language. The last time I read it was regards to the garage and that issue, so. I just, I just felt that it was a little impractical. Uh, I I anyway. I just, I think it's, the word should be changed from like, you know, the ground level or something, is, you know, whatever face of the building projects out. You know, the most, you know, what.
I'm just looking now at the code again, and I think. I don't think an overhang would be, it would at all be acceptable under the current code. Um, current code says side yard um, requires each side yard ten feet. And then it defines a yard as open and unobstructed. So it. If you have a an overhang, it's crossing that setback line. It it is, uh, the the yard is no longer open and unobstructed. If it's got an overhang, you know, intruding into it. So I think that's the basis. It's not, this is not where the where the code talks about measuring at the ground. I think the measuring at the ground is when it talks about the distance to other buildings. That's the only time. Um. So that.
So you know, it's a good point, it's a good point. But when we were doing the uh, easement, because they they were gonna have it. Can, uh, what do you call it? They were gonna have it butt butting out on both sides to give it an equal appearance. But we weren't, we weren't saying that there was any additional easement being sought. On on what was then the north side of the garage where right, it actually. Butt it out into the easement of the road more. It was certainly. Um. Yeah, it was an easement issue, that's right. It wasn't, it wasn't a setback, I don't think. It it was the the la- landowner inside who was sort of landlocked and needed the easement out. But they had enough of a side yard. So I get it, I, you know. I I I, we're we're good, we're good with the unobstructed language, so that's fine.
Okay. Any other business or comments from anyone?
Nice to meet you, Karen.
Nice to meet you too.
Yeah, um, so then I move that we close the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Bye.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thanks, take care.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye, Karen.